August 5th, 2021. This is the very early schedule of duly advertised meeting of Warner County Planning and Land Commission. And if you all stay in. Mr. Frankenbach.
Commissioner Adams.
Commissioner Reddick. Commissioner Davis presiding. We have the floor. We will proceed. And the agenda, there is a change, but we'll deal with that. Consent agenda, public meeting. We have the minutes from June 24th and July 15th. If you have any questions. Any corrections or objections or anything? Is that the one we talked about? On email or was that...
Yeah.
Yeah. Did I do that correctly? Well. Anybody want to see details? Those are the minutes from July 1st. July 1st, July 19th. In the packet here, we've got June 24th, July 1st, and July 15th. The agenda only calls out June 24th and July 15th. So, okay, so we're going to deal with July 1st later. All right. Okay. And that's... And I have to stay up until July 1st. So that takes us out of the consent agenda into the public hearing portion. We have the procedures handy. We have... Up on the screen are our procedures for the hearing. Staff will make a report. As a committee, applicant may draw a review project for the testimony. And once the testimony is complete, the applicant can provide rebuttal or answer questions as necessary. Close the public hearing portion or the testimony portion and commissioners deliver a file. So we have three files tonight together with the 5:30. The first is AM 20009-21. It's unchanged 0017-21. Probably ends a map amendment, it's unchanged for war. And who are we dealing with? Is... It's going to come back. Same number. It's not very sensitive. It's the way filed, that's not going to be here tonight. But it's something that the county commissioner, the three is to be allowed. Not dealing with what's on the agenda. So anyway. Yeah, part of this stuff. It's going to go age certain or anything? It's going to come back to you differently. The original application was for wanting to personally go come back to. Okay. Essentially, the postponed investment is done forward. So that must not be anger tonight. So we want to file as a argument. So the next one on the list is about B 0011-21 on size of minimum variance. Requesting lot size of minimum variance to July 5th forward. Equal cost to parcel of 1.4 acres and 1.4 acres by family exemption. Property located in the five acre zone and off of Highway 2 with Section 26, country 73 West. There's a green. But as the procedure said, first up is the staff report, so we can go again. Should we call conflicts of interest? Are there any conflicts of interest? No. Assistants in participating tonight.
Tonight, commissioners, thank you for being here. So we're here to discuss a lot size minimum variance application. Property located off Highway 2 in diverse area of city impact. This is the site map provided by the applicant and indicates how they'd like to propose to divide their property. Resale through a five acre. And as repeated before, looking at a 1.4 acre and a four acre split, you know, R5 zone. Property is divided by power lines. So some side characteristics of the property, as mentioned before, it's a 5.141 acre parcel. It's in the rural residential comprehensive land use plan, zone R5. It's access by easement, entry number on the point there. Also, lots of soil on the property between 15 and 29 percent grade, as well as a little bit in 30 percent grade in the rough, kind of in the south portion of the parcel. Doesn't contain a bar fund. There's one type of soil on the property. It is fondary, so it's not fire retardant, it is well drained. And for the application, water and sewer service would be divided, adjacent properties were booked. And there is a 1.5 block on the neighboring property to the east. Certified by a lot size five acre strip. By the county's 12th District 84. Jason Johnson, also a 5.5 acre, reviewed the file. Send one zone X. So, you know, no significant foot risk there. And there wasn't a further review required because we're looking at a lot size minimum variance development at this time. The filing of the agencies on 15th June. Got your comments back, home for engineering, from the hearsay loan, environmental. They backed off at the state of the project, which is pretty typical. Until someone's building or they're really, you know, kind of forced an area out of or near shore line or something of that nature. Fishing in also contacted, but they had no comments. We didn't receive any public comments and now our agencies didn't respond. So when we look at evidence, we kind of look at the conditions that apply to properties that may or may not apply to other properties in the surrounding vicinity. And, you know, the applicant kind of broke down, you have the proposal to how they wanted to divide the property. And I would highlight here that they indicated that there are several current properties in that same zoning district and also in our intended districts, be kind of at least, that are lower than 5 acre minimum lot size, empty respectively. Then, you know, the applicant is responsible for putting power lines there. They were there, they purchased the property. And so they also wrote about access to, you know, the property and how that'll be done. And just closing by saying that they indicated no detrimental effects to the neighboring properties request. So these are the standards we use to review the file and make our determination. So looking at the property, you know, kind of historical imagery from the birth, you know, just use the time wire back to 2009. You can see those power lines over there. And they acquired the neighboring property to the east in 2013. So I kind of ran a buffer analysis in GIS because I wanted to see, okay, what's the average, you know, acreage surrounding this property from the 1500 foot buffer? And, you know, ran through, actually kind of looked at two different analyses. This one actually shows the average acreage, as you can see, is 5.45. That's the buffer line intersecting with all the parcels. And as you'll see in the next slide, I ran a second analysis just to kind of see what's the average acreage that intersects with the centrals. Reason for doing this is in the literature with, you know, grocery services, general speaking, one of the ways that they see what's within the service areas, looking at where those centrals intersect with the buffer. Kind of to remove biases on accessing something. And so I kind of just used it in this analysis too. And so looking at this one, I go back to the screen here. This next slide will show you all those parcels that are located, the centrals intersect with that buffer. And so the average acreage of that block to is 5.13 acres. As we can see here, there are some foots out here, some rock off. And there certainly about about one acre. So, you know, for various reasons, we kind of have to look at what's in the area, right? What's in the same zone, what's in the same vicinity? And, you know, how is this property unique and different than other properties? So I kind of threw that a little bit. And as we'll see in the next slide, you know, the power lines to divide, the number of properties kind of looking eastward in the rural five zoning district. And here is the zone map kind of showing those properties again highlighted. And so as a consequence of that, and looking at those other properties that are divided by the power lines and looking at the average acreage, because it's a 1500 foot buffer vicinity, stack building is not consistent with bar code or vice code. And therefore, we are in denial. I would also add, one of my considerations in reviewing this file was looking at the land, which the land's currently developed. Is there a well on it? Is there a subject system on it? Is there a house on it? How can we justify this, right? And so I wasn't able to justify it looking at the facts. At this time, I can take any questions.
Questions, Mr. Stadler? Hearing this. Can we move ahead to the applicant's presentation? A few right there. Well, either way, the speakers are on the ground ceiling, so anyway, and then your name. All right. Nick Nichols, 128 Cross Road, San Point. And I do want to thank you, they did all the hard work. I've been in the county for many, many years. I used to do firework for the Department of Labor, worked on the... Appropriate plan back in the day, and I understand the process really well. Also understand the various process, and this is varies for the purpose of hearing from the code. And so as I presented this, I'm looking to get this split as a family exemption. My hope is I've got a son that suffered from brain cancer and I'm hoping to get a place that's close to us. And I know that does not pertain to the land and the land use, but this is our personal reason. So that being said, a couple of things that Chad, that was in my original document, he was that, you know, I proposed it within 1500 feet of the property. There were a number of properties that did exist that were below the current zone that's out there right now, the 5 and the 10. I know using the method that Chad used that is related to grocery stores. Put it within the center of the properties that I'd like to present in just if I may. And I do listen before, wouldn't they have to be in their exhibits or would we keep one? And actually, I think I made that further. So what I would like to present is that, which you listed, there are two things. One, the property that the land were all end of the properties that did not fall within the 1500 feet as Chad represented, which are just here on the other side of the carpet, where they were down to one acre actually. Because it was listed in my description of property sizes that were within 1500 feet. I just didn't go to the center, actually, the property value of what it was. Number two of that is I'd like to present that if you look at the properties both west and east, you'll see on this map that the power line was actually loose past the property boundary on the cell, except this parcel right here, which happened to be a parcel with the family next door whom has a larger parcel than you usually know, your husband's stuff divided for themselves decades ago. And that being said, you know, having the, moving the property boundary and having the split available where it's, we actually will use this, will provide two items for us. Number one, create two parcels for our families that desire to need. And secondly, it would fall in line with the rest of the property boundaries that are ultimately confined to the existing power line, under for easement power lines. It kind of runs right through the edge of the property. So that being said, I had had it contested and I do have a copy of that I'll present to you. So we do have that, that is approved. And three legitimate intentions, one for a site of the power line on the 1.4 acre parcel. And two other spots on the larger parcel of the four acre parcel. So that's been preliminary, preliminary done. And I have a well builder that is hired and contracted to come up this month to actually put a well on site on the readyable water in the cell side. This property occupies within the R5, and there are many properties less than five acres within, you know, within 1500 feet of it. It is in that area, the zone of, it looks over the water, it's got a, and it sits a little bit different than more of the commercial timber ground R5 properties that are out there that was provided a little bit different service to, for residential use. So I guess that's all the presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Your questions still have? So as far as, you say you've got a drill coming out. Any information about what's in the area? Well, in this, I mean, my land is like 800 feet deep. My neighbors' world, which happens to be my son's, on to the west of me is 300 feet deep. The property adjacent to this, boys' property is in the three, it's 280 feet, 230. One of them's 280, one of them's 230, they're all right in there. I just happened to, when I bought our property, which is immediately adjacent to that, we just happened to drill a solid place that didn't get water. Until they did it under the, you know, I got it. Or is it for the spring? Yeah, and no water going, I can use. So water does not seem to be a problem. And subject is completely approved. Okay. Any other thoughts, questions for the end? Looks like not, thank you. So, and the audience have anything to say about this spot? Next spot. So what we want to... I did go around and see my neighbors and everyone seemed to think it was inhabited waters up there, so. Okay. Therefore, since no one else wants to testify, we propose to put a testimony portion. So, here you are. Okay. Let's, let's everybody think.
I'm sure everyone's there when it gets to a different angle. I still don't have a plan, I want to play a four being, so I'm still on that. I don't think I've got the stadium. There's been other options that the applicant might have, such as the baby gear. This would definitely be an option. First ruling is, and what does it have? And yeah, it has a split through because I have. It may be an option as well. Different property. Ultimately, the options that we've seen.
So, yeah, it is interesting. When the case for the disorder, dividing a property institute to the west of the subject property using the right way, the power line right away. All those properties end up less than five acres. Some of them are large, some of them are in the rich parcel. I'm sorry, make the topic line go all the way. Yeah, yeah, just.
But to Suzanne's point, they're, they're not quite so small as 1.4.
No, there's only according to the exhibit, one lot in the area over at Park Creek. Which is a matter interesting one, it appears from the sketch that when they divided that one, maybe it came from all the property on the east side of Park Creek Road. They chose to put a lot line on the north side of the east and around the south side. Could have maybe made that lot, so 1.09, 1.9 or two acre lot, two acre lot to the south. Or so, we have to do the math. What about two's to threes and fours? For sure. Yeah, they would have, they would have made a more valid argument that those two have acres because there's the COVID, the urban and water services. Do you want to be able to address that later for you? Um, yeah, there's a... But really, there's a question, what's the question? So the applicant, I think it's hard for him to ask. Registing, there's another question, you know. Oh, about the well. Are you talking about drilling well opposed to be the cell block and certain other block? Or are two of those? Right, we can build one, it's all we can afford. Second, we have to put the other one on. So the warehouses, these are by their own. Water in that area is really good. Just hitting that bit there. So, yeah, the potential is for each lot to have its own assembly system. Well. No, there's anything, any report about this adjacent properties to wells? But we looked at all of that, everything was good. I have her out. Okay, they look at that. So, there's the evidence. So, whatever it is, we're still going to have some discussion on the table or a panel. Can I answer to any question about this, to an applicant that was asked? Yeah, that would be cool. As you might have noticed on the map, the slope map that was presented by Chad, the slopes drop off the road, not very far below the second building site. So the first building site would be able to be up above the power line. And the next one is just below the power line. And then the slopes do drop off, not making it impossible to move, but making it very difficult to move in that area. So that was the, that is really just sort of perjudicial about the best buildings. It's very steep. Yeah, and that's certainly reflected by the location of the houses on the adjacent properties. Power line occurring from the south and like a slope. So the map, that's kind of what we're going to do, we're going to roll over. Which is why the state rally goes up. Okay, so there's the answers, information. Desire of the commission. Desire of permission. So, Suzanne mentioned that. Is my legal passion existing? If you have any view.
But it's an option, I mean, it's a, it is a other option than dividing it up so small.
And we, and we obviously then say, um, across some.
Right, that's exactly kind of how it's going. So we, if it, if it reduces to that, it's a small, what is another option?
But the rationale for even putting the smart line on the south edge of the property is.
Much, right?
May be a strip off of, you know, all these people.
Right, because there's several that actually broke down as well, so it's not.
The stone parades. So, it's not as severe.
It's saying, well, we didn't cause it because the power lines didn't work. Then don't cause it to be so small because of the power line. They don't realize that.
So, let's get a motion up.
Okay, um, Christian Frankie Bach. I'm going to deny this project file, the zero one one dash two one lot size minimum variance to buy a five point four one acre parcel into two parcels. One, one point four acre parcel and one four acre parcel based on the filing conclusions. And, and I think the conclusions of law are actually accurate in the way they're written. So conclusion one, conditions apply to this property that do apply to other properties in the same vicinity. Um, those conditions are, are not for this only applicant. But conclusion three, uh, the granting of variance is in conflict with the public interest. And that it will be detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare. And that's to me because it comes so far below the five acre minimum for the area. It comes down into the region where we are, I expect to see urban services. Back to the motion here. Uh, the decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared. The testimony received at this hearing. I further move without the following findings of fact and conclusions of law as amended. As stated really. This action is not involved in taking a private property. An action that could be taken if I need to obtain the variance is to, one, file a new application with the planning department and meet the standards required by Modern Counterparty Rights Code. Or appeal the landing and zoning conditions consistent with the county.
So, Christian Frankie Bach has made a motion to recommend denial of the priority of the night variance. As requested. Is there a second?
Thank you, Russell.
A motion for a second to deny project file, the zero one one dash two one lot, lot size minimum variance. Any further discussion? And follow in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any of those, aye. The motion passes to. So, uh, let's see, the, uh, conclusion or the, uh, solution to the denial. Would probably apply to something for property issues. Alright, that is the first file, second. So, the next case is file M O D zero 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 five dash twenty one. Notification due December five seventy five. Profile Z C three sixty five of eighteen. Duncan, Jean and White, Stanley, Stewitt, requesting to remove the language future divisions of land within reasonable boundaries, warrant, leave surface, no volume, private roads. Mordeons number five seventy five, there's no change, three six, three six, three sixty five of eighteen. And I place a motion procedures before the first thing up with the staff report, so. Any conflicts on this one? No. Please, okay, thank you.
My Sheriffs, appreciate you being here tonight. So, to discuss a modification of a conditional zone J that was approved back in twenty eighteen from the Quail River Subdivision in the Blanchard area. Uh, this is where the file is located off of, off of Goldfins Lane. Specifically, you were. It's divided. These are the specifics of that, of what they'd like to remove from that zoning ordinance. Um, attached to that file. Um, and you know, and just to summarize it's, you know, before the land is well, it must be paved, it weren't paving. And so, request is to remove both of these components from the ordinance. Um, so we're looking at two ten acre parcels. Um, they're in a residential property and land use plan. They are zone real five acre. Um, accessed by Goldfins Lane. And there are no map swabs, wetlands or stream systems that run through the wealth properties. And this is about the environmental features. Um, there are two different types of soils on the property. Um, both are, both characterize as farm farm end, one if you're native. And it's both properties are served by individual septic system well. And then Spirit Park District, found by, by again, and power and then large high school district, you need three. So Jason Johnson, again, there'll be this, um, these properties and then floods are next, so. And, uh, no further floodway review is required because we're not looking at, you know, building any kind of structures or anything of that nature. Um, the file is, you know, relative to the agencies, as we can see on the screen here on, uh, to watch this. The comments. Um, we did get a comment back from Chief. And, um, this was his comment, Quail River was over against me before the county passed the five acre on Goldfins Lane. And now they're referring to Mr. Lee's property, Mr. Property and the properties, um, north east of this property, these properties. Um, pretty modest area does not be accessing U S standards. For I know Dr. Firego, those lots should have not been re-zoned because the density has further increased. This is now, we're going to vary it through this archive and the road ordinance required, paid roads should be maintained throughout the area. Um, D Q L's comment said, saying there's no environmental impacts at the stage of the project. Um, could be, one way sewer district's comment saying it's outside of their bounds. They've been, they say that they've been highway district. We had a couple of, of like your comment fishing game, um, which is notable. Um, because in Mr. Peterson's file, they didn't reply and said there would be impact to, uh, well, uh. Uh, probably a hospital district, quad four, seeing quad four. Um, we received no public calls for this file. Uh, these are the standards we used to review the file in relation to the request. And, um, to me, you know, kind of, okay, whether they zone out, so there's no exact. Putting the property having effect on that zoning again, where density that's greatly allowed. It does not. And then also, and as we'll see, um, by the applicant's presentation, um, what she is preparing. Um, you know, how much of this road pay, um, is not paid, right? And we see, right? It's, it's less than a quarter acre, it's actually a point, you five acres, or sorry, miles, miles. And so, we're not looking at a, a large stretch of land and, uh, they're paving just down the road. So, in, in some ways, not going to affect, uh, a lot of it. They can put just as many homes on there, eighty U's, R Vs, whether or without the division of land. And so, consequences of that, staff, government approval, we need to find a consistent rule of law. Can I take any questions?
Questions, you say?
It's, it's interesting to me because the numbers of, you know, that file during the settlement. Staff recommended.
That's correct, right.
So, so now, so now you're saying it is consistent with going back on your previous recommendation.
Yeah, so that was another twenty eighteen, that was the client who worked the file. Um, and you know, a lot of county in, in general sense, we don't have conditional zones, so that was a recommendation. And that recommendation was, you know, agreed to by the developer, from my understanding, for that development. And so, um, because everyone's looks about it, because they, you know, agree to it. Um, to be fair, I, I don't know why they stopped paying. Some little side thing. So, yeah.
See, the people that was like, almost that night when it came up. And it was a, he had to pay back the money, and then the outbreak just jumped in.
So, so what happened with this file is, is it came in and applied for zone ten acre lots. And, and then after they did that, they created an eight lot short block. And proceeded to sell four of those lots, two of those lots, I guess. Um, then he came back and applied for a rezone to five acre minimums. And this, this, uh, these two lots got included by the reason. And so, but because, and then he came back and because he sold those two lots, he didn't, uh, didn't signify it because he had sold them. So he didn't sell it, they had them down into the fines. So he, so that's why he stopped paying at the end of those lots. And all of this, that's all it was in the end of those lots is, is, at the end of that rule is those two lots. So, it just, it just wasn't, you know. And then the way that the, the way that the notational recommendation was written was that all land required that to be paid. And so, no matter how they tried to divide the property, if it was a family exception or whatever, it still required, uh, paving. And so, basically, what, what they requested was however long that is, four hundred feet or five hundred feet. But they requested not to have to pay that one, but it's. So, do you have any backup?
Very clear. Excuse me for a second here, so I can just look at the property. I'm part of the DA at this point. Alright, so the other properties, um, and would you like me to measure and beat something?
No, I'd tell him this open, it would show. See the two channels everywhere, you know, you know, twice. Those are, those are the two channels that were left out of the next subdivision process. So, because they were left out of that subdivision process, he didn't, he didn't pay it all the way to the end. The way it was to pay, we had worse pays and we're not here, I put a hammerhead instead. And then, and then the twos up above to the right, we just, we, you know, the county just according to the zone change provides, in fact. So, so these folks came in and asked to modify this condition for those specific lots. Because again, the challenge with it, what staff had was that the, the ten acre parcel on one side, so are they required to pay the whole one or just a half of the one? And that's where, that's where it got pulled off a couple of years ago when the property owners, when it first bought it. Was, was they're like, oh, so I want to split this into five, but I didn't pay half of it. It just, it just got screwed in, I think those, those original property owners that were sold, they used to want them back to. So, you know, that, that's why the request is here. Is because it just got left out of that process and they don't think they should be required to bring in payment out for using that road. That's why the hammerhead is. Paving goes to that area. And the next. Whatever it is. Four hundred feet. Second position.
And then Goldfinch doesn't pay either.
No.
You know, when I looked at Mr. Coen Nielsen's property, I did a site visit and kind of looked at the gravel road and, um, they was in pretty good shape. So I haven't looked at it again, but it was a dry spring.
Conditions, conditions vary. Really, that was the whole principle that as these lots get to five acres. It was, that was the whole, as I recall, and it was necessity to break the road to a higher standard. So only five acres. So, it's split five. Yeah, and to me, the biggest issue is, is less about, in my opinion, it's less about those, more about the one way in, one way out concern. Which was, which was a part of the reason for the paving, so that it would be consistent and reliable. And into and out of the air across that ideal parcel.
And higher density.
And with the other approval on the county road, outside of it, so forth. So, there's, there's a lot going on that seems to be tripling off. But the potential is still there to. Do you have a, do you have a, 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 you know, you'll, you'll get there, you can just get there. Alright, so any further questions for Sam? Therefore, let's hear from the applicant. And they have an address for the record, please.
My name is Jean White. Um, and I dress as four fifty three Goldfinch. I'm here. Um, I don't want to look into the history because we worked in eight, and, um, uh, previous present journal last file. Um, provided that, so. Both of our parcels are ten acres, they're currently mod, uh, excuse me, currently zoned are by a residential five acres. The modification that we're requesting does not impact density because we can already place homes there. And it doesn't affect any of the other properties within the reasonable limits of this file. Now, I think that and the next. Um, that's all at home. That's the Jewets. Uh, this, this is an aerial view. Paint hammerhead property, pavement ends literally at our property line. We have pavement, and I'll show you in the next, on the next slide, we have pavement to the property line. Um, that is one point two five high, one point one two five miles. I'm even a corner mark, I can go to the. Just again, wanted to show you the property lanes and the road. Where the pavement ends, literally on those properties, we have paint hammerheads which we get access to our property from that pavement. Um, I'll let you go to the next. And it's just another, just a different view. Um, the left and right, just a little bit better with the hammerheads. So, that's it. Going back.
And your request is to improve the condition.
To paint the road. Because what they're saying is that we paint that road. This road right here, the pavement ends here. This is road edge lane and it's, it's dirt. So I can place them on there if they wanted to. But we got to buy the property, got to paint this little section of road right.
Yeah. Not in the county. Maybe it is, it hasn't, it hasn't been in this county, but, um.
Are you able to comment? That way I'm off the copy and order wire.
Okay.
So what we have recently done is, uh, approved a, a rezon of some of the twenties falling back to the right on, on good finish. And there is not requirement for payment for those lots. So really got to be a little, little sketchy to try to, uh, we just don't, don't see why we would have to be required to pay when we are, uh, there is no requirement for payment on the same road. Really kind of a, kind of a, kind of a hidden mess, um, in the payment requirement department.
Well, it, and, yeah. Yeah, I think what we're seeing, thinking back to the previous Glow Ridge developments, they were progressive into it. There were a lot of lots back there, twenties and so forth. And they started dividing, I mean, the fives, so collecting. Altogether was, putting the, yeah, this is a lot of traffic on the road and these two pay. Then you have the one at the end. Can't make the end guy pay to from where it ends up to his place. So.
There's also been an access needed, this is going to be recorded, for two of the files that have been recently rezoned. And the access is going to come off of Songford. So what I have, two, what I have less than that back through the, um, I mean, if you, if you.
So, so he's talking about something completely different than we do. He's talking about this property right, which was one of the ones that was recently approved for four block, our vibes.
Right.
This gentleman actually owns a property on Songford. His eas, one of the concerns was the roadway, the traffic on the dirt road. He's splitting this into ten and two fives. He's giving easement to these two backfives off of Songford, off of his other property. So, but that's completely, that's what he was making, what my husband was making reference to. I did want to address quickly the, what, and tell me if I'm out of line and I'll be quiet. The fire chief's comments. Um. Although he, he, he does not yet say anything about a moratorium on building. He's not, he's not, he's not stating that's a moratorium, but he just keeps saying it over and over. And, and I, while I understand the potential of an, in, I, I. Association has talked about that. But anyway, I don't touch on this, I'm not aggressive, I'm nervous, can you tap? I can complete the symptoms.
Should these songs are paid? Because, I mean, that was the whole concept, that you could see the number of five acre lots. That was the reason. So up in this northeast corner of that original section, where it starts to fade away, or the whole acreage changes, at least now. And, and all, the owners of this, always will never divide. Yeah. What if ten years from now, everything's five acres up there?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
What if, what if ten years from now, everything's five acres? Right back in the same hole that was originally, uh, dealt with, with the ridge. That's, that's, that's one of the, one of the weaknesses of development in Warner County. The next guy in shouldn't have to pay. But then it's the next guy, and the next guy, and the next guy, and the next guy. Almost like we got a whole square mile around. And there's no services, there's no provision for this, that, the other. So I, I, that's more markets. And I, I, see now, it was the folks that were down.
So. The rural residential, do we have in this staff report?
For the, the rural zoning district, that's how they're referring to. Yeah, so, yeah, but, I mean, the rural zoning district doesn't per se mention road standards specifically. But, you know, when we address road standards, we look at short blocks and subdivisions. And so, you know, through the my land division process, at least thus far, we have not, you know, created a road standard. And I think, Gina, that's what you're kind of referring to. Um, also, I'd mention that, you know, that the properties north, um, you know, they were, they were left on fire. So required for painting, they weren't part of that subdivision, right? Potential there. So, five acre, uh, even now, there are lots where the existing houses are located.
Correct.
So then, the potential to do it. And why, why would the underlying need for higher standard roads not keep working its way to the northeast corner of that section?
I think potentially a lot of that was the developer paid, I mean, it's like, he paid for that. And then he increased the cost of the property and sold it to people. But now you've got one or two people that are required to cover those, those costs for everybody paying costs on the other.
Any, any further that you want to add? Do you want to speak to your intent of why you want to divide the property? I mean, we talked, kind of talked about on the phone briefly, the reason for why you want to divide the property.
Absolutely. So, my son, we actually wanted to give our son, not five acres to move. We have three children and one lives here. And his concern is, I don't want to fight with the family members. So our initial request was going to be come through, uh, wanted to do a family exemption, which we can't because it's already planted, so we can't do that. So this was our next, our next option. So that, I mean, that, that, that's, that's why we want to do it. It's, it's not to sell it, it was, I mean, it was for our son. And we can build, and he can build there now. He's like, Mom, I can build that house there now. The challenge is if something happens to you or Dad or even Ben, now I'm fighting with my brothers and sisters over this property. And he goes, I don't want to have to fight with them.
In the opinion of this world factory, it's, it's cost prohibitive for us or whatever. And we said that we only have the means to do that. But that's real cut and dry.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's like, yeah. That's what it comes down to, but, uh. Yeah. All right. Any other questions? So, thank you for your. Something, yes.
I'm actually the neighbor that was the, uh, person in charge of, I think, presenting the, uh, his own charity while she was talking about the new new blocks. Chad, can you talk definitely, because I was quick, you mentioned a lot of, of things up. Just kind of kind of break down a few things that they were talking about and just why I think it's a good idea and it's important. So, like we're pointing out, this is Mr. and Mrs. Meisheim right here. And I actually just found out about this, they haven't told me this. Kind of, he's going to use his lot to give access to some of that. So that's one less set of problems there. I just recently sold all of the ten and two fives that I had, and the same person who has made it, he is going to reconvene them into a twenty. He does not want to have neighbors that close. So that's the most impactful there. And then, with Chief Green and I, I think we kind of gave two words as one stone. This one really rate what Mr. Chambers pointed out, the propensity issue. He keeps on going on and on every time anybody wants to do anything, including a lot of this, and I'm sure about the propensity game issue. And I will point out once again, as she was trying to, how is this part of the main concern when you deal with fire problems, not a bare lot? So, extra lots, you know, houses, what property? So, to be serious about stopping fire dangers and mitigating it, he would want to be housing more tolerant. So, we're, so, so he's talking about more mortgage and you tell there's a run extra besides there. They're not here. I mean, so it's the same. So. Which is a double incident. So, what you're going to do with this area has to say that you can use two houses, just like the ones they got here on each of these lots if they're not to. And they're running out, there's some of the other house from right there, but it dried right out onto the hammerhead. And it's the same density as if they split it and gave it and blocked. There is no difference when it comes to the density and impact on this road from that versus if it's split into two or five. Except if they split it, they have to pay it for some reason on that score. Uh, and then, as I, I can, I can live with the presentation I did here, you know, it applies here anyway. As Mr. Chambers once again pointed out, rural zoning does not have part of the road standards applied to it. Now, I know this goes a little bit in because it was part of a plat, part of a land plat, an actual subdivision, so, but still, if, the art, the rural zone does not have any kind of paving or any road standards at all applied to it, these two lots, only these two, or a hundred other lots having that requirement on it, despite the fact they already could have extra density if they wanted it, it's kind of ridiculous in that kind of, on that score. So, you know, that's just, I didn't want to, thank you.
Yes, sir. Eric Snorer, I'm a two hundred and nine caller. Um, I'm a deep as far as the, um, that the resonators, I have the only eight now on my property, as a new move. Um, more, more lots we have, more people coming in, it's left on that, uh, uh, spirit of the pieces are kind of example. I'm sure you can hear me now. They have access off of that, into that hammerhead for those two lots. You know, having that word stripped and from the, from the plat, I wouldn't think that's a system. They can still get back to that side of that, right at the hammer. That's what I'd say. Okay, thank you. Any else? Don't say anything? Any else? Um, I don't see a need for rebuttal or, or say anything else you want to add, but I think you said it pretty well. So it was a public testimony.
I'm sorry, there was a.
Oh, you got somebody on, oh, I was, sorry, sorry. So we, we opened the testimony, sir.
Sorry, my bad. Reg, can you guys?
Yes, thank you. Reg Crawford, Sandpoint, Idaho. I, I'm not weighing in on either side of this. I, I don't have an opinion on that necessarily. I just want to say that this falls into, uh, the category of what, of the buyer beware that we've created in this county. And if we ignore the subdivision rules because it hurts individuals, I mean, it doesn't seem like it's fair to the community and beyond. I don't, I don't want to, um, rain on this particular case. But we are a buyer beware coun, uh, county, and this is what the, the commissioners in the planning has set us up for. And it hurts citizens when the subdivision design standards aren't followed because people aren't made aware of it. I, I hate to see individuals penalized, but I'm just wanting to point out that this falls into that category. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, somebody else online? Right now, it was public testimony. For the corporation.
It dropped that, by density, it dropped the, obviously, safety concerns. It went off any overhead, thank you, that was created as. Very long, extensive, next year.
Yeah.
So, can I, this, I'm, if, if you have a, if you have a question on the five acres up, why can't you have two of the same? Okay, well, as you said, that's, so that's, as we explained, there's no, you know, diversity. Yeah. So I didn't, you're in the provided area, it's already been decided.
I don't know.
You're on the left, Richard. Off the top of my head, I have a question for the applicant. What did you acquire the lot to do with your neighbors, you know, and?
I didn't hear you.
What did you acquire the lot, when did your neighbors purchase their lot? Their lot, right?
Uh, yeah, we sub purchased theirs in, it was October of nineteen seventy seven. And we signed and closed on November sixth of two thousand.
Okay, so this is probably in place.
That was previous, I'm required.
You're correct, but so when you bought it, you didn't.
I'm saying, when you bought it, you didn't.
Right. I mean, and then I know that fire marshal can say, they've done a lot of fires down in that area. The dust becomes a big issue when people are out week. They're coming in, and some of that, super dusty, and they're, they're, I want to see them that. And going to this, it gets, it gets pretty hectic when you drive, fire. True, it's, this statement is continuously constant state in their, still in their areas. For the, this, he regrets, he feels that it's not appropriate to just have a single access point. But it's pointed out, it hasn't recommended to the county of moratorium, so. If it's such a concern. And frankly, that was, that was, I really, all I was thinking is why, uh, they cross, I don't. So they would better facilitate versus service. Fair. So. Just a question maybe, for, is, is there any provision for him to request a living moratorium, or to have one enacted? I mean, Jason certainly writes an email and say, hey, I have a few attacks, but not everybody mobile in this area, but is there any provision in the code to enact a provision like that?
Yeah.
Or is that just an interesting conceptual, I feel?
Yeah. Well, anyway, you have to show, you have to show, how would you, would you, it's language. Says, the comprehensive plan services section says that active services shall be provided. And I don't, I recall, was it the whole, it's there, and he can show, uh, just like, Northside Fire and Home, so, they're saying, there's some situation, I think, that I call, for, for, he's, and that he's, uh, additionally, it doesn't solve. But certainly, that's, that's just a, a problem. It's funny, it was the protection provision, also, yeah, so, so, we answered. Now, he's not saying, I can see that, it's, it's just, better, yes. Like, it's not hard, but, uh, maybe we can, so.
But, I don't know, Dave, this, but you say, like, clearly, but, state clericals, Dave, because, I don't know what those are.
I don't, I, I've never heard of that, he's, I guess, well. Yeah, I don't, yeah, the state, like, state clericals, whatever. I don't know, I guess, but it says, we try to, it's bad. This was addressed, that, you know, it was, it was, it was. This is, that's, in common, back then, and the challenge with the second niggas, was a statement. Shouldn't make that declaration on the, so, we get that, so, we get that, so, we get that. It just wasn't, uh, I agree, but we keep, that, but, that's what I struggle with.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, this is, this is. And the more, the more people are there, the more traffic, I'm doing, the more there is of our, the worse situations, I think, that's, that's.
Well, and that, and that's an interesting comment, because we just approved three lots, just, the, the, so, so, it's interesting to see. It is, it's, yeah, it was complex. Again, I was against you, you achieve right now, without the vision, that I can be able to see the, the, this very condition. Why that's the condition of all? Condition, to further, and use the condition as a need to be taken. So, that's the very needs period. It's a good, it's a good play. To. Instead of just stopping. So, it's key, right there. It wasn't required, so. They required to split the files, to split the file, which is the first one. So, so, those two lots, so, they got left out of that re-plant. And, so, you are, you're. Maybe one degree is not allowed. So, then, that, so, maybe there's. Same lots, it's like, please, wow.
Because the cloud, the condition of the cloud was shut. Sure, very good. No, I want that was, was all right, supported by gold. And, uh, yeah. None of this is in the present. Was it? So that actually no one, because it wasn't a climate, on the subject. That was, and that's where I'm not so. Side of yours. Any commission to put in place. Maybe I was correct here. Initially. Which have been came into our recognition. Right, to both. Creation. I ask you, but I've got a question. That's. I give us something just. They bring some to your purpose. It applied specifically to these two lots. Even that's what I don't know, was that the original change just for these two lot? Not always the original change part, but this one, this one more initial scale down adjustment. Yeah. I mean, I get it's also making me talk about conclusions, this is create a hazard. Did we get heard that? That's one of the conclusions law that I will wonder about. Well, because it allows it's going to happen without. So in and of itself, there are no changes today. But down the road, it creates possibility that you can do it, do it routinely, but because that's way as. And this requirement isn't there anymore, so that then create. And see arguments all ways, frankly, I have this. The chief said that he discussed some significant concerns on the other hand. It doesn't address the one way, in and out issue, which probably they don't want, and it doesn't address the issue that with the exception of the area that's not going to be paid, no matter what happens. Was somebody excited? It's sort of hard. Not sure. Not like we need to go back to. But yes. Leave it after, otherwise. As a conclusion, why I don't, I am, I'm not clear about the public service session. That isn't a problem. Yeah. Great. So. No. Or it's five. Cover. Danger of the section with this up to. Cover the result. And all the spatial arrangement of that logic. So we have this up here, but the, because all you sound is up, just that one. The zone change is determined. It was ZC three sixty five eighteen, but I saw the, the zone. Okay, so here, I suggest. Instead of that, zone change three sixty five. The only thing left is this. That's the thousand. That condition that ended up true of result change. Probably goes this next one, couple, two lines. Uh, to the end of gold issues about three point five to pay them to the end. But that's covered by this condition. So. As we have to, is the relevancy of that, uh, that condition. It's all change. It applies to these two person which can be. They don't have to defy to have those desire perfectly defined. But probably worship. But.
We should want to please define special areas or site. Actually going to go to the application to answer that question, because that's a question we ask on the application, either identifying. Their sites around the area. So they're not applicable. So we're talking about double sides, uh, architectural art, archaeological science of significance. And damn operations. Our cultural preservation of cultural resources, historical, historic areas, sites, structures, museums, things of that nature. Cultural resources. You know, ecological law, but then I note that, I know the department of fish and water did not comment on this one. Architectural significance and scenic significance of. I was like.
Now, public services. Actually coming back to the fact that the condition that ended up, you had all changing. Was a very good condition. That was agreed to by applicant. And. And we all have the. Where it could progress from that to change. The recommendation. But it probably did, just the same as this. Saying that it wasn't ordered by the county. Not to say any one of the. And, uh. So, type of chapter seven, chapter twelve. Chapter seven, type of twelve. I asked you, so. Your own change. Sure, can we, do that, staff of work in decision right there? Yes, it can change, so there was the regular process that had this one condition. We argue that, but. That it wasn't consistent. And that's made on the cap. It's just. And nobody feel at the time. Right. It's not, it was not, it be going. It's just able, that just to take that one condition off. So it's a notation. A key of the patient. Here's then the. Close to the result. So it's kind of really, yeah. And it's, I hope that I get you on that. So we have to prove. Yeah, have to agree to it. And it traveled with property. So. At the. CC three sixty five, yes, this was the additional identity, notification of recognition. Yeah. This is your hearing, uh, session. What? Which might be really interesting, because. Is a condition closed up property. It's going to be an obvious, I do financial worth. Or, I think, that's not true, well, it certainly seems like it would be. Portion to yes, every other lot. And the cost, and creating that was, was very, a lot costly. But, you know, same. Equation here. The impact of the. Last great case, yeah, it was a case, yeah. All right, hey. Build something. Really delay decision. Do you want to relax, sorry?
Yeah, you can.
Third fourth and bar, I got a question. Hi, people. Two by nine, it says there is. Hey. Surely have it. Because of the subtle results. So that was all change. But such. Don't change. So I. Yeah. Says to go forward, says there. They are. Their advisor. Case. So change is creating. Advice to. What? There's something, that's. It's also interesting, I think this. His own hours. Meeting standards and such, and shall pay. Side for. As we stated. Always. So. She has to be paid. Those were. Right. In a. Save. The operation of. Be. This last, this last portion. We found out. Yeah, I mean, that's. Right, so then you have communication. So. That, that, that. State. Yes. That's the field of these. And you got exactly the. And there's. There's no. There's no. I trust. I'm sorry, oh, you can do it, trust. Yes, yeah, and you can describe it. A lot of options. I think about that. Here's a lot, some of those. Yeah, there's something out there. I can say we meditate on time. Such a. Is that. For the why? Recognition of denial. Okay. So, that's my question, to go, perhaps. If we can, how do we lose, we can. So when I have a say to. Other power. Yeah, I believe we can do that. Yeah, because it, it, it's not, it's not really clear how to, how we will write up a conclusion to law. And they have to get into the, right now, it's recommendation, conclusions are supported, recommendation approved. I mean, the recommendation of denial, I think we have a different set of conclusions to draw. So the really standard question used to be was, just that you would do not, right? Right, and I thought I don't know. Remember, because again. Chapter seven, type of twelve. That's water. Yeah, and, and even this, this conclusion, too. Because I think it was fine. Because it talks about environmental standards. Water and standards that were chapter seven, type of wrong. So. So I, I'd say. Yes, we could take. It's kind of backwards, we can take a rate. Back to a certain time, to make conclusions and make recommendations, but. We have to, we commission it, the role on playing off. Right? That's what I was, you can't remember. Well, that's what it says, I meant, it's all. That you have ten days to, four days, basically, you have days to make a decision, because it's gone to the, or the commission to. So. I think they talk about this on Marcus, but not too many to do that, to, to leave a. Just some of us at least agree with the notion that food, read the way it's written. We would reverse based on the input from the budget. And say that it creates a hazard. Like, because it creates the opportunity for the management to happen, without it getting happened in the world. And, and I regret to say that, but if not, it does prove it's all. That's where we are. There we are. Nice to. This is concerned, but. You can try kind of agree with me, but I'm not sure it's relevant, one way to do. And my. My information is conclusion one on the compact. Is the words of compact on a large number of elements, but the one that I would question. So it's. Say. Saves to me the nature of this combat, because she could be a. Keep her. Exactly. And you got similar. Exactly. Said, no, no, it's. As aggressive, therefore. Saying that that along with the other things will solve that easily. Right. So. Yeah, that's, uh. Getting on towards the. Conclusion block. So on conclusion three, specifically, do you feel like it's okay to just to say, create a hazard, or do we need to change the, that's the way it's paid? And say that suggest to create a potential after. A features, a future split without. Doing something about the road, creating a future after. Will create a. I don't know how specific. I guess. Yeah. I want to. Just say we go to this end. We'll activate a. On Jason property before. On property that will affect Jason. Especially monthly, the way that case came down. Where's the? Just agree to. So. As would be. In a conditional reason. Let's do. We like. If. To. By the degree. And it's. So. The ones who. Or two standard should be the ones to say we understand it. Therefore, if we. Just maybe we're going to go back. If we were. When they take it up. And. We had decide. Here anything or everything. See if it warrants. Getting off. We're getting on. And. Well, then. Right now, we're. This where. Hey. I think it would best ask the question. It's. Some change. Whether we had a. Precision effect of that. But that's own change. Have taken up the rest of the section. Our section. I think there'd be a great case to say, yes, absolutely. Right? So that all there, the guys that take it back. Now. But it's something they want to do that. But it's. You had to go to. So. I see enough to that. With the same item that we pay for facial recognition. Everything. Yeah. Says. Got the board. David. Take it to. It's maybe a stretch. But. Maybe. Maybe substitute. To. Here. So that patient. Basically. But this place. Tired of you. This is. Tired of you. Talking. How is that they were able to call that patient recognition? Here it's so. Yeah. It's all. That. Also. No. You could go on a three. I tell you. It's yeah. It is. It's. 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 Is. It's a recommendation. It's not a requirement. It's a recommendation. Or. We're not the only ones. So. It would be a big part for us. Saying. You are it because. Even though it's a recommendation, it's on the board. So. On the actual. So again. Very long as it. And it's their own. Change. So. I think we feel. Or it's necessary to change it. We make the recommendation to. Those. Has to be the desire. Yeah. I. This is Commissioner Braddish. As I move right now. To. Being. Zero. Zero. Five. Two. One. Progressively. Down. They want. Service. Modification. So. Modification. So this is the. Contrary. And. To. That. Not. And why. That. When. Number five. Five. That. Well. Potentially create a habit. Will be. Maybe zero. 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 Five. Has stated. Cause there's like. Truth. About. We have a motion directly to the aisle. File. Number two. Zero. 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 Five. That's two. One. In a dirty discussion. During the session. This is the issue, right? The decision is based on evidence. That is that. Or the very testing. Tearing. A little bit of drop. And the fact. We should. Why? Is actually not. Well. They would. I would copy that. Actually, I could be taking the. To. A conditional use permit. If. Modification. Implementation. By the new application. The. Pardon. And. Required by. On a. Third. I don't think we're. But you. This is. Going. To. Captain. Okay. There's these seconds. Those. Yes. Any further discussion? Hearing. Unall. Very. Say hi. Hi. People say hey. So. So. Last. So. To put the ordinance in place of the other ones. On. Sticking with this call. Seven thirty. So. Too easy. File. Two. Two. This. No. There's an absolute. That's. Staff. Probably. We. Get. All. So we are. Out of. Thank. You. Yeah. There's two of the. Chi. Yeah. Well. That's the thing. But. Here. I. Ordinance. Or. Probably. More towards correct. So. But. So. 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 Nineteen. So. It's. Only. That makes sense. Six. Or. After that. There's. Two. Two. Yeah. To me. First. This is the time where it's too. Southwest. So. Oh. Yeah. So that's. You. Yeah. I think. That's. So. Where did they sign up? So we. Think about. Just. The. Fourth. Four sections. Three sections, which are seven. Six. And. So basically. Really short of them. Staff. This is. Should stop the. That. Just. Problems. So. Where folks. Split. Over. Twenty. And then. My. Just. From the. Side. So. That. Sort of. Something. That's crazy. Weird. It was using. So. So that's. Something. That. That. Which is. Helpful. The. The other justice that they do withdraws was the. Question. On. General. Right. On. What? But they did. They did ask. Back in May, we asked. Time to set a meeting. Page. To discuss. This. Situation. So we did. And we had a couple meetings. One. Over the page. We just. Yeah. From. He was. And. I think. It's. You know, the. The. Commission for that condition. Part of. That. Black. People. Something. Back in May, when the. Heather hearing took that out. It doesn't. They. We had. So that's why. That all came about. I. I don't know. There's a. We. But. This was. This. Time. For. Mission. And on the. Health. So that if. We. If we. Put that. PhD. Sign up. On.[1542.51] And on the health, so that if we put the if we put the PhD sign up, yeah, things get a little bit. So because they're short. Sure, they're short to kind of advertise to request now plus the act three. So. Back in the day, yes, the paper. It's very old. And after the power pieces, remember. Everybody's saying, well, I don't think that's. See, really. Five. Yeah, yeah. And you explain that. You know, over here, yes, those halls. We won't keep asking the board that whoever's doing for ten. But um, so that's the first one. Then come back here with the correct. There's some things in there that we've passed. Think of what you believe because of that conflict with the. I think much. The bottom line is. Say it's two minutes, two hours. Ready now. Yeah, I wanted a then. I get that. That's exactly right. Your accident. You're not giving us. Far as you think you could move the house. It's even harder as you can run with the first turn tomorrow or something. You can still look. Yeah. So they did kind of try to show that quite there. People could do or something could show up. Clearly, if we board on Wednesday. Issue of the. Most of the responsibility there. I don't care about the cop plan while we. Check it out. And everything else all about. Coaching. He been. Pretty good. So these were what I've been working on. It's why you chat. But I'm making every other Monday for two hours. I've been making last week, as I expressed to them. Well, it's kind of a regular thing. State law order on fire stated that the existing cop plan. If it's writing or objectives are going. They're clearly they're out of date. The text is not a date, but we're not saying, all right, let's start out. We're just going to throw that out. Which is kind of what the committee's ambition was. Here's now something ready to stand on its own legs for each other. That will be tried. So. If we look at the existing cop plan, go through that. And really dissect one, the text of every component. What's in the text? Uh, I've been trying to find it delivered in that way. This. Look at the preamble. It says, these components are made of the plan. And investigate them and come up with goals as they apply the land use regulation. Constantly that through the the text, see what parts meet that test number one. So it's. These meet that test, these could apply directly to many three which will actually. Or if you don't seem to meet that test. Or what I think, I think, I think really nature, or they just some like the JV through there. For page or something. There's two columns there. So that seems to apply, but it wasn't directly applied or stuff that's going to. Go through that exercise on every control. Whereas then I tried to express that there's interaction between the elements. And they all sure came toward land use, because it says land use, very large. The land use department has to be key of the exercise. Uh, and and right now, because that resolves into the land use map, this issue. So keep filtering it down. And I think the vision of giant matrix. That's one that that's why you started. Um, just comparing all these things, comparing all the components and somehow aligning them so that like things can vary. And they should be up there, just like the last over that. And these words is going to always develop. So do that first and then see. Again, I'd say whether any kind of mandate would all to replace this is not his plan. David point saying. And the opposite of others to say, here's the strong points, here's the high points that the groups. There'll be groups in time back in two thousand four or five that was together on behalf of the citizens. It's a really exercise. That's a few hours, seven. It's what's seventeen comments. She. Exercise. As the series. Start working hard. Some of the things in state code allows that. But one of these departments, if we listen out, doesn't totally apply given this message would treat it. And say, well, okay, so as in the series, other choices. It's the person, it's no surprise. Possibly that. First round of counting, your copy doesn't give it. If wildfire, exactly, wildfire is going to be the portion of that that really warrants something such. And a good uh choice to have a safe like take care of itself or whatever. It may happen. Uh, village concept. But that's an example. It doesn't have to be that clear how we look at the existing cop plan. We can ask this. And as a book, I've got every block county and every state side that was in place and then trees. So like, how does that affect land use for English? It should say it was an adversary and have to do this and this. Around that. And I. So we go stand in favor, in favor, say it is necessary, just coming here. And therefore you can have these smaller component right up in any technical processes. Locking itself wasn't have to be sometimes to the recent. But the rest kind of the background will play into the two system. One little thing down, so those are the rules of the query. So that'd be seventeen. Components was a group, strong, strong preamble. There's another place where it's got to be explained to the public. On public now. But this is a concrete to claim this part of the code. And whether that be even being on support by means in case, let's say lines are busy. It's direction, it's not law, etc. So expect that it's going to change. That is what I. This what's. This. All that. Our goal said, D code says. The D code is. D code says. For a. You know, how it is all changed or. Show the assessment for such change. Maybe those words should be changed, uh, the top of the chain. But okay, so what's the assessment? Started building that, playing the cockpit to land by college in fact, that stays alive. Card to grant. He's wanting to leave the data as I pointed out, anytime. Well, Andy says, gee, it just happened, fall of that section three months. Go on. That's very true. That's how it's one of the side together. Right? Says. Yeah, he is, and and maybe that be a little change. You know, during various discussions, saying, how do you prove assessment? It's very simple. Extreme decision. Well, forty days. So let's let's find the rules of what's subject. That fits better than it can be. Absolutely. They're going to sound like. Now, unless and where it were. And if the desk seen them, uh, county if you want to compare discussion, investigation. Now, that's the world, this area should obviously be. So due to our estimation. Assessment can change. Those ways that we can come in before it happens. Takes them to safety. Okay. So uh, maybe like the property here is got to be. We've got to summarize it. Yeah. Well. Uh, it's done. I guess it's all PDFs, yeah, those are all PDFs. But even there, you've got the lockup feature and all that, those. Like to. All have. Probably say to you. Worded after. Yeah, sorry, I. So the example that's. I thought it was originally dotted word or maybe it was a word perfect. In fact, I don't want to go over the trailer for this. Well, maybe that's one suggestion. Uh, just. We. Really responsible. We, that's our. I know. Since we, of what. Sound, leaving to me is, you know, let's expand the reading. Because we we got to call on it, and I think that's what we can do it is to start. Start with Jesus. People says, you know, that or this. Uh, figure out the weak points and we're going to cancel later. Replace them wherever. It sure is going to be complex. There are a lot debated, most of the data in the thing is going to be. So I'll change. But it's for the soil. A lesson to write. Natural way, so it'll still be same as it was. Why activity increase. So all people should be really proud of. They're leaving the. The soil is going to. Okay. And I see us. Yeah. Yeah, we must have. At a high level, where do we think we're headed? Are we going to? Well, I'm thinking about is the sub area. Yeah. Five, six, sub areas. Mention about sub area. Say it's out of the sub area plans or still going to be some. So I'll say some, some element of the plan that's down at the sub area. Low detail, but the rest of the sub area could be. Do we have any thoughts about that? One, one reason I asked the question is, Don is asking if it's some investigation into getting the sample census data. Uh, for some of those basic statistical basis and. And we'll need to know whether we need to be able to present that to that petition at the sub area. And it's a fair amount of work to do that. It was a one time thing that we'll be able to do medically. So I said, do not break that off the same as moving out of the city. Or the existing city. Yeah, I know the uh, clearly the incorporated, the data from the census data from the incorporated city block. And so I'm looking at those areas of sub area, it looks like they're pretty much approximately exist. That's approximately the case now. Yeah, so and try to break that out. Maybe. But yeah, I think one of those lines that's another exercise. We now have the five great planes. But those things side by side. And and or matrix or whatever. Because they all have things separate. They all have the same topics. Going down. Which is for us and look for the similarities. If there's broad similarities about the Bible, they're not going to be. My third one is very drugs and Larry. Yes, I didn't read any of those words, but they're acting for the same. Yes, so surely we do that and and we know that conclusion, we have said they help us. So we do that. We again acknowledge the work and then in that. I I don't know, this this whole chapter talks about the conflict. It's like, oh, this is the discussion about the conflict. Say. Say it was a nice. Yeah. Is that the same sense, say the same results. We can provide a reasons why. I don't. I had that exercise. Do, and that's that. Maybe pretty, so what is it? Those is. Some of the areas like on that pressure. While they wanted to send things to the someone, I'm pretty sure they're actually willing to. She couldn't keep it out. Her name is land use for emissions that actually want. Whereas they need to live in that. So so yeah, it's the same things that they want, which is pretty sure they're going to build a child. That so maybe it's. I don't know how much. Now. So if you're really there. This is layout. Portion sections, like pretty much. Which is what I said, so we do. Several major match. Which are, you know. To jump, right? That's a long. What he do, the value, okay, it's a great value, so what the values was. The reason why it would have to be just that. And maybe they go to get like whatever. Four or five, whatever. Just to back that up, more so than what's in the conflict now. We still didn't get there, so maybe we still. Make sure it's second to third language, uh, limiting. Something that is not there. So that's good. But yeah, I don't know why. Why. Preference, so I don't know how to handle that. Yeah. All the possible reasons, even to have a national session. Citizens in county. Every. It was hard. Thank you. So yeah. Seeing the the similarities, all desires there. Um, extrapolating back to what's here, the Republicans and that. Here's the sort of the role character. See. Mm hmm. I've heard that that will be like, it's, you know, you can get that for a little bit something. Yeah, it's a little bit. Very sensitive, it's a very could be, you know, and you have to know it. It's like the the blocks of their work. Just has a general discussion on it. Saying, because it does. And I I don't know. Absolutely all the folks who might do all this. Describe Caesar tweaks, because again, they call the section. To get the maps up. Because it's just easiest to do. And I I wish we had time to make sources to to take that to the next step. And say, okay, here it is generally. Uh, looking at a court decision, how they view over that line. And they have. And the cause for the cause say, that's not a solid line. Sorry, folks, why because that line was there, well, I'm sorry, it's not solid. Fairly well said. The interesting thing too is pretty horrible. When they're caught on land use, those nations mean exactly as you saw. But I'm not. We would back radiators having the total as a sort of basically a lot make a zone. In the scope of the nation, right? Start all. Yeah, and and this. I follow your rationale doing that because it says we just want to point. Over over the limit. But that almost also, well. The ten twenty five ten, that idea that this, that it could be. And yet people say, oh, no, it's ten, it was only the ten. That's a good point to write to people. Because this right here, so. And that's why I say I wrestle with that. And it's any good. So. Eggs, if we. If we come up with some descriptions that are a little bit pushing the reality. By that, then what? You can't. This is. Next. I don't know, my game's on the loose. Yeah, that's what it takes. Move this again, and she has to do. Ross. Twenty years. I don't know. So really, I knew it was the reason. They do. Please. We somewhere. Say sure. Yeah. The business of this, this reference or. Yeah, that's right. But I didn't actually, well, because that's why. It shows our. Or they're showing where the stuff. But I just. Sets is on the road, so it's. Instead of right here, this on the. Do that still, but also free. Do that.
So I want.
Wait, it's right. It should be.
It's senseless.
and no division, no so I guarantee you that this question towards there's nothing like it, there's nothing there was leaving my imagination, no, I expect that's yeah. Well. So anyway. Expectation. So this is early on, that whatever we did, this, that was gonna be, I'm gonna be wrong. Yeah. Yeah. Um, but I was in universal, at least in my, who I was, I wasn't, I don't think everybody saw the world, but, but they're not universal. Obviously. And there we go. Yeah. It's, it's, it's the quality of the order. So that's what's happening over here. Same. But you step ahead on the year, the seventies. And they saw, they saw the bay lady of the seven. I heard he was on the I heard that. Anything goes up, that's all I have heard. It was and they wanted to avoid it, they wanted to stop. So that's where, uh, the previous conflict kicked in, or the initial conflict, said whatever they want to say. So so I, I don't, I personally don't sound too like I to some some twisted. Boy, hey, all right, you ready? Eight, nine, six. Meeting adjourned until August nineteenth, five thirty.